One.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Chatham Select Board March 16, 2021 meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. Effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Now, for efficiency, while we're using this remote format, please am asking everyone if they would mute their audio until which time that you're being called on. At that time, you can use the Raise Your Hand app feature in the Teams app, or if you're on the phone, you can speak out to me and say, just get my attention. Equally important, please disable your video until the appropriate time to present or comment. And remember, we are conducting a business meeting. So our first order of business is to establish a quorum, so I'll do a roll call of the board, the select board. All right, so Board Member Kokolos.
Present.
Board Member Metters.
Present.
Board Member Nacastro.
Present.
And Board Member Dykens.
Present.
And the Chair is present. Again, if you are on the phone and listening in, you can also mute yourself, and then when it's your time to speak, you press star six. Okay? Our first order of business tonight, welcome everyone, is to approve the meeting minutes of March 9, 2021. We can note the typos by email to Shawna, so I'm looking for any impact of substance to the meeting notes. So could I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 9?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All right, are there any substantive changes to the meeting minutes? See none? I'm, okay. All right, so we'll take a vote to approve the meeting minutes of March 9. Peter.
Aye.
Ori.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
And Chair says aye. All right, our next is public announcements and agenda item requests. I have a couple before we get going. One of them is good news for the town of Chatham. On March 15, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Appeals Court issued a rescript opinion affirming the judgment issued by the Barnstable Superior Court dismissing the complaint against the town and the Airport Commission by Citizens for Safe Chatham Airport. The complaint sought to prevent the resumption of skydiving activities at Chatham Municipal Airport. The appeals affirmed the decision of the Court of Summary Judgment to the town and the Airport Commission's finding that the plaintiffs' claims were entirely speculative, hypothetical, and not ripe for judicial review. The plaintiffs can petition the appeals court to consider or modify its decision within 14 days or seek further appellate review by the Supreme Judicial Court within 20 days of issuance of the decision. In the event that the plaintiffs do not pursue any such further appellate review, this order will become final and will be forwarded to Supreme Court for entry on the docket as the final disposition of this action. Okay. Also, my other agenda, my other announcement is about future agenda items. I just want to let the public know that the next few meetings will be dedicated to annual town meeting article reviews with a goal to close the warrant as of April 13 or 20. Our next meeting on the 23rd, we have slated articles pertaining to special legislation, articles for housing and housing funding, and we'll have other housing articles to review as well. All right, now I'm just going to review the meeting, and we're going to do, first off, a coronavirus update with Dr. Dunkinson and our Town Manager Jill Goldsmith, and then we'll go to where there will be, there will be public comment, it wasn't noted in the agenda. And then our business agenda is about the 2021 Annual Town Meeting Article Review, the Council on Aging COA Project at 1610 Main Street. It will be a vote to place the article, recommend, and place question on the 2021 town election ballot, and also to refer zoning changes to the planning board. We will be accepting public comments during this, during the business agenda. We did have on our agenda that we were going to convene the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees, but that is not necessary, so we will not be doing that. So that will be our meeting for this evening. And then, so we will go forward with a coronavirus update by the Director. Yes.
I think we inadvertently missed allowing the public or public announcements and agenda item requests.
You're absolutely right.
Missed that.
My apologies, I was zooming right through everything.
That's all right.
We have a hefty, hefty meeting tonight. Sorry, folks. Does the board have any public announcements or agenda item requests?
No.
Okay. Does the public have any public announcements or agenda item requests? You can raise your hand, or you can speak out. Okay, I don't hear any. All right, then we'll move forward to our new business. Thanks, Dean. Our first order of business is the coronavirus update from the Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Dunkinson. Dr. Bob.
Good evening, thank you, Shereen, Madam Chair. So for tonight's coronavirus update, I'll try to keep it brief because I know you have a pretty hefty item on your agenda. So just quickly, wow, all kinds of new messages popping up. I'm going to share my screen relatively quickly here and just show you a couple of the figures that we routinely do. So this first one is our confirmed COVID-19 cases in Chatham. As of this afternoon, we have 276 cases since the pandemic began, and we've had 16 cases so far in March of this year. And you can see from the graph, the spike that we had back in the December, February timeframe, and hopefully we are over and past that, and we will not get another spike coming up from the recent school vacation week. As of this afternoon, there's 10,810 cases of COVID-19 in Barnstable County, and that's an increase of 46 cases from the previous day. And there are 424 deaths in Barnstable County, and that was an increase in zero from the previous day. In Chatham, we are still standing by at 26 deaths total since the pandemic began of Chatham residents or people living in Chatham. The other thing I wanted to show was our age distribution, as we always do, and this just gives a breakdown of the 276 cases that have occurred in Chatham. And as we've seen fairly consistently, the highest age group is the 90 or above demographic, and we've spoken about before that a large majority of those were related, unfortunately, to folks that were in the Liberty Commons long-term care facility during that spike just after the holidays, when they had done such a phenomenal job at keeping COVID-19 at bay for roughly eight months. And then unfortunately, they experienced a surge when the nation and the county and the town did after that holiday period. But that has quieted down now. Liberty Commons has gone for multiple weeks now without any new cases, so that continues to be good news. You know, of the cases that we've had in the last week or so, they were evenly split between the 60 and 69-year-olds and the 70 and 79-year-olds. We had two cases in each of those demographics. So that's where we currently stand in terms of our caseload. Just a couple of other things that I wanted to touch base on. One is the average daily incident rate, and you can see on the graph here, and that is something that the state started to send out back in August, and probably everybody is familiar with the color code, you know, red, green, yellow for each individual town and the Commonwealth, and how back, you know, after the holidays, we, along with many other communities in Commonwealth, were in that red zone. We then came down fairly precipitously at the end of February, and we made it all the way to the gray zone, which is the lowest category available. But then last week, and this data is always a week behind, and it covers a two-week period prior to the release date, but in last week's release on Thursday, we actually saw a slight uptick in our average daily incident rate in Chatham, to the point where Chatham went back to the yellow zone. Not a place we want to be because the next zone is back in the red zone and not something we want to see. So hopefully this week, when the report comes out on Thursday, we will drop back down into one of the lower zones, which would be, continue to be good news. And then finally, the last thing that I wanted to speak about, or one of the last things I wanted to speak about, is the vaccine, knowing that that is a topic of interest to pretty much everybody. So I have some good news and I have some bad news. And as I know that most people like to get the bad news first, I will start out with that. Earlier this afternoon, the Mass Department of Public Health indicated that the first case of the Brazilian variant was found in the Commonwealth. The really bad news to go along with that is that that case was identified in Barnstable County. So we have had our first case of the Brazilian variant in Massachusetts, and it's in Barnstable County. It was based on a test result that was done back at the end of February. It was COVID-positive, subsequently sent to the CDC for typing, and it was identified through that way. There had been other cases of various variants in Massachusetts. The most predominant one is the so-called UK variant. We currently have 213 cases of that variant, and we have six cases of the South African variant. But we will continue, meaning we, the state, the feds, will continue to monitor these variants as they occur. There's really no change in the guidelines for people that are, you know, taking the appropriate precautions. It continues to be social distance, wear your mask, wash your hands, and the most important one currently is, when your opportunity comes up, get your vaccine. So now, on to the good news regarding vaccines. We were notified today that the county is expecting to basically see a, almost a tripling of the amount of vaccine that's going to be available in Barnstable County starting next week. We are currently getting about 11,070 doses into the county, and beginning next week, that should increase to about 3,510. So almost a tripling in the amount of vaccine that we are getting. It will all be the Pfizer vaccine, so will continue to be the two-shot vaccine. As you know, there was some Johnson &amp; Johnson single-dose vaccine distributed last week. The expectation is we will probably not see any more of that for general public use until April. But hopefully, we will see more of that coming soon. We actually did get word today through Outer Cape Health Services that we will be getting some vaccine by Friday of this week for our homebound residents, and that will be the Johnson &amp; Johnson single-dose, which is great news. And we are teaming up with Judy Giorgio, the health agent, with Mandy over at the COA, with the fire department, to get those folks vaccinated that obviously are homebound, so can't get to any of the vaccination clinics. So we've been working with Outer Cape Health Services on that, as well as the state. A couple of other things I wanted to touch on so far is probably, hopefully, everybody knows by now, the state went to a new pre-registration system for vaccine availability at the seven, at the state's seven mass vaccination sites. That site went up live on Friday, and as of earlier today, 700,000 residents in Massachusetts had signed up through that pre-registration site. And the first appointments through that site went out starting today, or the first notifications of appointment availability went out to residents in the Commonwealth today. As you can imagine, with 700,000 people pre-registered and about 150,000 doses coming into the Commonwealth on a weekly basis, it's going to take weeks to get through that list. So as we counseled folks last week when that was first announced, if you have the opportunity to get a vaccine through some other source such as CVS or Walgreens, go ahead and take advantage of that. You don't have to wait, even if you're pre-registered through the state system for one of the seven mass vaccination sites. If you do get a chance to get a vaccine from somewhere else, take it, and you can always remove your name from the state's pre-registration list. So, and then the other thing I just wanted to show, and let me share my screen here one more time, the state is now providing town-level data on the number of residents in each town and their vaccination status. So this is data as of March 9. Similar to some of the other data the state presents, they only provide this data on a weekly basis, and it's usually about two days old. So this is the first data that came out. It was a simple spreadsheet, I went ahead and grafted because it's much easier to understand, but this just gives you an idea of the percent of Chatham residents in the various age groups, and they don't necessarily, the age groups don't necessarily match up with the ones where I've indicated the COVID cases, and that's just because the way the state is reporting the data, and they're not breaking it up into as many age groups. This is also based on 5,280 residents, so basically the 2010 census numbers. And we all know that that may not be accurate or totally accurate with today's current population census in Chatham, but it's a good benchmark. And this just gives you an idea that up to approximately 88% of Chatham residents 75 years and older are either fully or partially vaccinated, which is great news and, you know, understandable, given that that age demographic has been the ones that have been eligible the longest, and there's been significant outreach directly to that age group. And then in the 60 to 74-year-olds, where just under 50% have received either full vaccination or partial vaccination, and by partial, we mean for the Pfizer or the Moderna vaccine, they have received one of the two shots. Fully vaccinated people can be either having received two doses of the Pfizer and Moderna vaccine, or the single dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And then obviously, the younger demographics down to the 30-year-olds, there's a much smaller percentage of those because technically, they are not eligible yet for vaccine unless they meet one of the other eligible groups, such as a healthcare worker or, in this, recently teachers. So those demographics have much lower percentage. And then when you get to the 29-year-olds and younger, the state is not reporting specific data if there's less than 30 individuals in that particular age range. You know, the 0 to 19-year-olds, again, no specific numbers reported, not to be unexpected there because the vaccines are not approved yet for anyone under the age of 18. However, both, Moderna has started vaccine trials for youngsters as young as a year old and higher. They just announced that they were beginning those trials today. So hopefully, that will change in the coming months. And so with that, I think that's all I need to report on tonight, and be happy to answer any questions. Shereen, you're muted.
Thanks, Bob. When I was on the COVID Task Force Response Team meeting this morning, Sean made the announcement about the, can somebody, okay, made the announcement about the more vaccines, but he also wanted to make it clear that it wasn't just dedicated to Cape, Barnstable County residents, that anybody, you know, could and can get that vaccine from all over the state, because I know that a lot of people are from the, from our county are traveling to other parts of the state to get their vaccines as well. So, any questions for Dr. Dunkinson from the Select Board? None? Okay. Any from the remote participants? Anybody on the phone? Okay, I see Elaine. Elaine? Go ahead.
Yes, I was wondering, Dr. Dunkinson, could you just repeat those numbers in terms of saying we're three times as much? I may have misunderstood. Are we going to be getting 3,000 now, where we had 1,100? Because I thought you said 11,000 to begin with.
No, we're currently getting 1,170 doses in for Barnstable County, and beginning next week, the county is expecting to receive 3,510 doses, so roughly three times what they're currently receiving.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I see Chief Dave Pasquale. Chief Dave?
Yeah, I just want to thank Dr. Bob and Judy Giorgio and Mandy Speekman for all the work they did, along with Mark Heller from our department, I mean, as coordinator, recognizing and, you know, having a plan ready to go for our homebound, and we should be able to hit the ground running on Monday. So we had 10 of our firefighter paramedics take the training, and they're ready to distribute the shots. So I'm proud of the work that the town's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Dunkinson? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you, Dr. Bob. You're much appreciated for all the work that everybody's doing. I agree with Chief Dave on that. All right, our next is an update from our Town Manager, Jill.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So I'm happy to report that our staff who were out quarantined and are now back to work, so we're very excited about that. And then next week, I hope to provide an update on the Federal American Rescue Act estimates for funding for municipalities specific to us. I'll have more information next week, and what's good news about it also is that we can use those funds until calendar year 2024. So that will be a nice relief for us. So when I have the actual figures, I'll certainly report that next week. And kudos to everything that Chief David said for our internal team to reach those housebound residents. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Jill. Any questions for Jill from the board? Any questions from the remote participants for Jill? Okay, thank you very much, Jill. All right, we're going to move on to our next business agenda. This is, public comments will be accepted here, discussion on the 2020 Annual Town Meeting Article of Council on Aging Project at 1610 Main Street. I just want to lay it out for everybody, a little bit of how the meeting will go. I've asked the Director of the Council on Aging, Mandy Speekman, to come tonight and speak to us about the role the Council on Aging plays in the town and in the quality of life of our senior population. And inclusive to her presentation, there may be some additional commentary from public safety, and I'll acknowledge them to speak in addition to her presentation. But we're going to reserve any Select Board comments, questions, or public comments until after her presentation is complete. Then after Mandy's presentation and the questions and comments, we'll move to our principal projects and operation administrator, Terry Whalen, and owner's manager, owner's manager, Rick Palmeroy, and Joe Bergman, our architect on the project, and they will give, they will be up next with a project status update and will explain additional due diligence conducted and the latest estimates on the project since our last meeting. So we'll also be hearing about the bidding, financing, and scheduling efficiencies before we take any potential action to place the article on the warrant and recommend it. And then also, we'll be referring the planning board, the zoning change to the planning board. Alex Halela is not here tonight to discuss the financial plan, but Jill is on board to be able to do that and answer any questions in reference to what we received in our packet. So we're going to move forward with this. We will start with Mandy, and I'd like to welcome Mandy to the meeting. Welcome, Mandy. And thank you for coming at our request tonight.
Hi, thank you, and thank you for having me. It's been a while since I've had the opportunity to see everybody, even on screen. So for those of you who are watching that I haven't been able to meet yet, I'm Mandy Speekman, the Director of the Council on Aging here in Chatham. And as we move forward in this process toward building a new Council on Aging facility, I was happy to have the opportunity to bring some thoughts and information, not only from what we've learned over the past year, but from nearly two decades of working with older adults. So as we slide into this presentation, I have a nifty little graphic here that shows the Council on Aging is sort of the center of the wheel, and Shereen commented on, you know, inviting me to speak on the value of the Council on Aging to the community, and I think this is a common conversation we've had over the last few years during this facility process. What does the COA do? Why is it important? And how do we contribute to people's quality of life? And we make not only referrals out to other organizations, but we take in referrals and warm handoffs. So when we are operating at our best, we are that connecting point, whether it's coming in or going out. We are able to make really effective referrals for people and make a warm handoff, as opposed to handing someone a business card, telling them to call a phone number and good luck. We are often a touch point for long-distance family and friends and caregivers. We are often a touch point for long-distance family and friends and caregivers, and we are connected to a lot of people in our community, some of whom are very highly visible and inactive in the community, and some of whom are more marginalized. And we're really privileged to have the trust of all of these people. The Council on Aging in a lot of our work supports and serves an often-hidden and sometimes disenfranchised part of our community. For some of these folks, English might be a second language, or they may not speak English at all. And for those folks who are not white, they may also not see themselves as represented in our leadership. So for many different reasons, we do have a segment of our community that are less likely to attend any kind of town meetings, and other reasons for that could be the digital divide, it could be physical infirmity, it could be cognitive or mental health issues. So in working with all of these people, the COA is really privileged to be a trusted source, not only of information for folks, but as a place that will guard the dignity and the confidentiality of people, while really effectively connecting them to resources that truly meet their needs. And to illustrate that, I just wanted to share just one example of a recent client that the COA has worked with. So we began working with an older adult last fall, who'd had a severe accident, a really difficult and prolonged recovery in a facility, and they lost their residence during this time. Once discharged, they were at risk for homelessness, they were unable to work due to their injury, they had no income, they were unable to speak English, and they found the language barrier, and COVID-19 prevented them from resuming any kind of normal post-accident life. So as a result of being unable to connect with a primary caregiver, due to COVID limitations and restrictions on new patient visits, they were blocked also from applying for Social Security Disability, Department of Transitional Assistance funding, and additional medical care. So the COA was able to make that really effective connection to Outer Cape Health Services, who has a translator, the Homeless Prevention Council, the Chatham Housing Authority, and the DTA. And this person now has an apartment, medical care, and income. And this is just one example of the really effective work done by the COA that you won't ever see in a newsletter, or a photograph, or a monthly report. And that's a great segue into the next portion of my talk here, which is the Elder Working Group and the COA as a partner for public safety. So the Council on Aging is part of a cross-sector working group that really prioritizes collaboration. Our priority also is the safety of older adults and the effective use of town resources. Following a tragedy in 2015, the COA, the Police Department, the Fire EMS, and the Health Department began meeting regularly, really with the goal of breaking down silos and creating a much stronger internal network. The VNA's Public Health Nurse and the Chatham Housing Authority have since joined us as well. And a priority of this group has been creating process and structure for best practices, including extensive training in adult protective services, which is something that touches all of our departments. This group has been really effective in creating and implementing the Chatham COA referral form. This form was an outgrowth of the now-defunct REACH program, which was Reaching Elders with Additional Community Help. It's an electronic form that's now used by Chatham's public safety responders to refer people to the COA who they observe might be in need of some additional community help and resources. More visibly, this group has also implemented programs in risk reduction, which includes identifying and documenting homes where vents might be at risk for blockage by snow. We have caravan around town distributing ice melt and scoops. We have the practice of the Council on Aging following up with any of the folks on the Do Not Plow List to ensure that emergency services have unfettered access during snow events. And we also have partnered with the Fire and EMS folks to offer home hazard assessments, and that's optional for anyone who opts to participate. The COA and fire personnel in non-COVID times offer to visit someone's home and identify potential fall and fire safety risks indoors and outside the home, and the COA can follow up with any kind of education or assistance in getting safety equipment when necessary. This, the years of work that we've been doing have really laid a, we've created a really solid relationship, and I believe that we have laid a foundation that will serve this town well in years to come. I think that we have been able to save the town money through faster identification of at-risk older adults, and we meet the COA's ultimate goal of being able to provide our residents with really comprehensive tools to ensure the opportunity to stay in their homes safely.
So, Mandy, this group really, sorry, I didn't want to jump on top of your presentation.
Jump away.
Okay. So this Elder Working Group, I don't know why I'm getting feedback, but this Elder Working Group really is kind of a fascinating gem of the town, and I just, you know, you guys meet once a week, is that what it is? And sort of, and it's an internal confidentiality sort of discussion about some of the more at-risk people in town?
We generally, we generally meet monthly, or more often as necessary, and through COVID, more often has often been necessary. And yes, it's an internal working group, so under the umbrella of Town of Chatham, we are able to converse confidentially and make sure that no one's, you know, falling through the cracks.
That's great. Is there anybody else on that's on this group that wants to add anything about the group that's on the call right now or on our meeting? Okay, well, we've got Dave. It looks like the whole team is, wants to speak about it. Chief Dave Pasquale, put his hand up first if you want to speak. Chief Dave?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just got to say that this working group is doing really great things for the town, and our demographic is older people. You know, Mandy spearheaded this, and I think this is a really important thing that we do. You know, I'll share a story too. You know, when you have a patient that calls 911, and they're, they need to go to the hospital, but they can't because they take care of their spouse that has Alzheimer's, who are you going to call? Well, we call the COA. You know, there's numerous cases I can talk about, but, you know, this working group has really done a great thing for our town. And again, the COA is, it can't be more important in our town. You know, I'd like, if Mark Keller's on to, you know, speak more about the working group, because, you know, he's our representative. But before I go there, you know, we have the Life Safety Educator Program in the schools, and last year in Massachusetts, for the first time, not one child under 18 died in a fire. And I think that's due to the Life Safety Educator Program, and the state's really proud of that, DFS. Well, we have a program that we participated in, and we plan to expand in the future, and that's the Senior Life Safety Educator Program. So that's coming on board this year, I hope. So we got the grant funding, and, you know, that's the next targeted group where we lose a lot of people in fires, and it's, I just think it's so important. But I'll let, I'll let Mark talk about the working group. Thank you.
Okay, I'll let Mark go next, if you'd like. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chief. How are you? So I just, before I even get into this, I just want to tell everybody how wonderful it is to work with the folks over at COA. They are so dedicated to what they do, and they are so caring about the people in the community. I have the privilege of working primarily with Mandy and Eva, and they are just so professional and so knowledgeable about what they do. It's excellent for us. This whole program's been a safety net for those who may fall through the cracks. Our providers are usually the ones who see these folks first. They can identify someone who's either in trouble or starting to go down that road, and in the time it takes for them to return to the firehouse, they have the ability to report that, their findings, to our group. And before you know it, we have a plan in place, primarily due to the COA group and what they can do, and with their connections. We get the resources in there right away, and they're safer in their home, and they're given what they need, they need right away. I talked about our working group and what we've accomplished with my colleagues in other towns, and as soon as their jaws are lifted off the table, they're like, well, you actually know who those people are, and you can talk to them? And it's, yes, and it's absolutely amazing. In addition, our working group, and through our Council on Aging and through Elder Services of Cape Cod, we've been able to educate our staff so well to look for identifiers early on to help folks. It's second nature to them now. So it's not uncommon that, you know, hey, we went here last night, they're going to need some help in the next few weeks. And we get the ball rolling way before anybody starts to have any kind of significant issues, medical issues, whatever it is. It's just a great group, and it's great to work with everybody in the group and have a good forum to discuss situations that come up and be able to address them. So I can't say enough.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I see that our Health Agent Judith Giorgio has her hand raised as well. Welcome, Judith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to heartily agree with everything that Mark just said. From the public health standpoint, the asset that Mandy, the COA, and her staff, Eva, have been to me, has been just amazing in the last 10 years. Our working group is just such a great way of communicating. If I have an issue, if I get a call that a senior is living in a poor situation, I immediately know I can reach out to them, and we can work as a team to remedy the situation and help make it better. And again, in the last year with COVID, we've really worked closely. They've been a great asset again. And just this week, as Dr. Bob mentioned, kind of hit the, it hit the fan today as far as getting the homebound population vaccinated. We're going to be starting that the end of this week, beginning of next week, but without the hard work of Mandy and her team, who have the pulse of the community, they know who these people are, they were able to put the list together, contact every single person, know who needs what special attention, and put that list together for us, we wouldn't have been able to do it. So I highly support the COA and all their hard work.
Great, thank you, Judith. Deputy Police Chief Mike Anderson, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board. Going last, I apologize, I'm going to seem like a broken record, but the Police Department couldn't be more fortunate to have the COA as a valuable partner. A very high percentage of our calls for service involve members of our senior community, and a high percentage of those calls usually involve a senior in crisis, whether it's a mental illness, a type of disability, abuse or neglect, fraud, or just being alone and needing assistance with day-to-day life challenges. These types of calls, when they come directly to the police, they tax our resources. We found that trying to rely on county or state agencies for assistance in these areas can be very frustrating. As you can expect, the majority of these crisis-type calls for service primarily occur on nights, weekends, and especially holidays. We also have to share these resources with other Cape communities, and sometimes these agencies are spread very thin. Several years ago, the working group was formed to share information and resources and to provide a true team approach to deal with some of these issues ourselves. The goal of our team is to provide a safety net. We try to identify the persons at risk and provide assistance or guidance to these folks before it reaches a crisis point. And I will add that, especially during COVID, all of the agencies and our partners have been very creative with some of these solutions. These individuals can be identified by incidents or interactions with any one of our team's respective areas. The Fire Department, Board of Health, Police, and the COA all have had occasions where they might interact with a citizen, and that interaction could be concern enough to bring it to our group for discussion. I can think of many, many occasions where a member of our community was identified, and our team was successful in assisting them with a problem, either bringing the assistance to them, or bringing them to assistance. The efforts of our team helps to prevent a large number of persons at risk in our community from falling through the cracks or being unknown until it's too late, and as Mark Keller said, that this group should be and could be used as a model for other towns. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. All right, Mandy, are you still with us? I just wanted to...
I am here.
Okay. Do you want to further your conversation with us?
I would, thank you, and thanks, everybody, my colleagues that took the time to come to this meeting this evening. And I will just, I guess, be the third one to jump on the theme that we really are a model, and I work with all 14 other Council on Aging Directors on Cape Cod, and there is nothing like this in any of our neighboring towns. So we should be really proud of the work that gets done here. So thank you to all of my partners in the other departments. So moving on from that sort of hidden outreach service side, I can slide into some of the more public aspects of what the Council on Aging does. And I can't talk about that right now without talking a little bit about the last year. So the last year has really challenged us and given us the opportunity to be really innovative. In some instances, we were able to recreate and reinvent what we do. In some cases, we created something brand-new altogether. And we've done that through a lot of live programming, so virtual live programming on the Zoom and Zumba platform, and in-person live programming in a drive-through fashion. So last month, February, marked the one-year anniversary, 12th month of distributing our pantry mobile food distribution outside in the front driveway. I think we've, Eva has worked really hard, gotten that from a two-hour to a one-hour, to I think last month, we broke the record and did it in 48 minutes. Our folks are very compliant and appreciative to still have access to programs like this. And knowing that isolation and loneliness has been such a factor this year, we were able to start integrating drive-through programming with a social, nutritional, entertainment component as well. So those drive-through events have, we know the value they have for people, they tell us, whether it's chatting through a car window, you know, with a neighbor, waving, commenting that they appreciate having had the reason and a purpose to get out of the house. For the staff, it really gives us a hidden component, an opportunity to do an eyes-on-wellness check of folks, and it's amazing, in a conversation that lasts a couple minutes, how we can pick up on things that might need to be followed up on. So we intend to continue with that as long as COVID continues to be with us. We know that this year has just been incredibly difficult for all of us, and we really have found it to be remarkable that folks have come to the COA, physically come in our drive-through events, and come to us through the phone and email, who have never touched the COA before. So that is definitely a silver lining. And from, you know, segueing from that silver lining back into the idea of the second part of the comments, which are, we really appreciate the virtual programming and the drive-through events, but we can't wait to get back in the building. So we know that there's some real value to being able to be together in a physical space. And you'll see in one of these slides that, there's a picture, and this was pre-COVID, so please don't worry about the maskless people who are not socially distanced. This is, this is before, and hopefully, this will be us after as well. And some of our lessons learned, you know, and the real losses that we feel from losing access to physical space, is that caregivers have really been left behind. We know from the Community Needs Assessment that we finished in 2016, that there was a desire from the community for an expansion of caregiver support programs. that there was a desire from the community for an expansion of caregiver support programs. That final report recommended that we expect and prepare for an increased demand for COA services. And that was pre-COVID. What we know now, over the last year, the supportive and the medical day programs in our area for adults have either been suspended indefinitely or they have gone out of business altogether. We also have learned from the past year that effective in-person connections happen most effectively and consistently in an indoor space. Even before the pandemic, the COA was so much more than bingo and lunch. No, we don't do bingo, but yes, we definitely do lunch. And there are needs for dedicated space for us as we grow older. And the needs and desires of a 60-year-old are very different from the needs and desires of a 90-year-old. And as we age, we all come to the council on aging for different purposes. We come for obvious reasons like social connection, fitness, recreation, arts, lifelong learning, volunteering, legal help, services, and more. For some people, retirement or other life circumstances, such as becoming a primary caregiver for a grandchild, results in unexpected shifts in income. And these folks may have a need to access financial benefit programs or, or and/or low or no-cost programming. And regardless of whether someone is a younger senior or an older elder, meeting in a really private and comfortable space can help staff create a relationship in which the chat, the client can feel secure and really effective service provision can happen. Behind closed doors are where those relationships are really built. So what we know from the last year is that social isolation and loneliness really stink and they have real physical health effects on people. And I'm not asking you to take just my word for it, but the CDC has released some studies recently which find that, no surprise, social isolation is significantly increases a person's risk of premature death from all causes. And those risks may rival smoking, obesity, and physical inactivity. Social isolation is associated with about a 50% increased risk of dementia, something that I think we all fear. And loneliness, again, no surprise, is associated with depression, anxiety, and suicide. And I think every one of us coming out of the last year can identify with feeling anxious, lonely, or all of the above. So from the, from the dark news to the light at the end of the tunnel, the CDC recommends, you know, they make recommendations for what you can do if you are experiencing these kinds of loneliness and anxiety symptoms. And interestingly enough, they refer people to local area agencies on aging, the Elder Care Locator, the National Council on Aging, and ARP, all of whom happen to work directly with and refer to local councils on aging, including us here in Chatham. So what we know is sliding into this new year, or sliding out of this year into the next. You know, we hit that one-year mark this week, right? And so doing a look back, one of the trends that we see is that at the council on aging, we've had an increased usage of services and programs. So one example would be the most recent drive-through event where we were able to distribute 72 homemade meals supplemented by some wonderful box chocolates donated by Robert Paul Properties and some really creative and beautiful handmade paper fortune cookies, which were in theme with our event. And we were able to connect with those 72 people and that was almost twice as many people as we could have served if we were inside in the dining room. So we were happy to welcome those people to our front driveway. And in looking back, I thought, you know, it feels like we're seeing a lot more people and talking to a lot more new people. And so I ran the numbers and if you look at this quick chart that I put together, you'll note that we were able to welcome about 300 brand-new, unique users of the COA who had never utilized the council on aging before. So I'm really grateful that in a year like this, we were able to connect with and, and provide service for those folks. And that is a great, I guess, segue into taking a moment to just show you a picture of our staff at the council on aging in the next slide. And for me to say that, I'm so proud of the work that they've done and the exemplary level of service that they've provided. The staff and drivers have done amazing work in really unprecedented and constantly changing conditions. Debbie, Eva, Kathleen, Maura, and Nancy have been steady, friendly, reassuring voices, whether it was on the phone, at the picnic table, out back, or through someone's car window. Dick, Paul, Roger, and Steve really helped us pivot the transportation program so that instead of transporting people, we were doing the pickup and deliveries, which continues to this day. So the, our bus has been a welcome sight in many driveways this year with groceries and medication deliveries. And so I know, given all of that, we are all really looking forward to something approaching normal. And so while we maintain this level of services and programming during the continuing pandemic, we're also looking ahead to the future. And what I know, what I know heading into this future is that our residents have really continuously, consistently expressed a need and desire to be in the building again. And that the virtual programming and the drive-through events are appreciated and they're acceptable placeholders while we continue to work back toward being together. Thinking about a new facility, I see opportunities for expanded service and programming, not only during normal times, but should we find ourselves in a pandemic event again or some other kind of emergency, we can take what we've learned and what we're doing now. And with better parking, better circulation, increased access to outdoor space, a different location, a design that would facilitate outdoor programming, expanded technology that would allow us to build on that virtual live programming. We could really, we, we could really even expand what we've already done this year. And looking at what we've learned and how that translates perhaps into a new facility, we now know that there was a whole segment of the population that we weren't touching before. These people who are either homebound or caregivers and have great difficulty getting out of the home, who really love the live virtual programming and, and they have indicated they'd be really interested in continuing that into the future. So with a new facility and different access to technology, we could offer a hybrid approach, live classes that are also streamed for participation by people at home. There's, there's some really exciting possibilities for the future here. So ending on a, a positive note, I just wanted to share with you all some of the comments that this shared by our residents with the staff. And these comments come in over the phone and email and a lot of lovely handwritten cards. So if we look at the last slide, not too many slides tonight. In response to receiving a Valentine card, such a simple thing from the COA, someone said, it's really nice to know someone, it's nice to feel that someone knows we are out here. And at the end of a call regarding vaccination frustration, which is a common theme these days, we had one caller say the COA staff was a breath of fresh air. After walking a caller through the process of trying to make a vaccination appointment, one person said the council on aging is like a little port in the storm. After our Veterans Day drive-through, we got a lovely note, things were certainly different this year with our parade and our ceremony. So to have you organize a recognition lunch for us was so wonderful. It really shows what kind of heart our community has. Thank you. We've had so many thank yous and notes of appreciation for assistance and also the continued loan of durable medical equipment, which has been highly utilized for folks who have driven off Cape to get their vaccines and accessing those larger mass vaccination sites. And the last comment I leave you with is from a resident who said the COA is the best-kept secret in Chatham. So I really hope that after this past year, tonight, and moving forward into the future with a new facility possibly, that the COA is less of a secret, maybe more of an open secret. And I thank you very much, I thank the board and, and you, Madam Chair, for your time tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mandy. I appreciate your time. I'm going to wait a second and see. Okay, that's better. Thank you. You know, being in community service, it's, you see the good and the, the joy of, of a community, definitely. And, you know, like our, you know, it's fascinating to hear all the work that the COA is doing programmally and doing during COVID, but also on a regular basis. It's very much like our, our, our infrastructure that's set up for our school system with, with, with their outreaches, food programs, meals for kids, the after-school programs and all the other things that the town funds. It's a very similar, equally important service to the town. So right now, Mandy, I'm going to have, I'm going to field questions from the board, the select board, and then we'll ask questions, see if anybody from the public might have some questions. I see Dean's hand is raised. Dean, do you want to go ahead? Can you unmute yourself?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to, are you going to entertain generalized, more generalized comments or just in response to what, from the board at this time, or just in response to what?
Well, if you have questions for Mandy, but if you want to make a comment, Dean, we still have presentation from Terry and that crew on the building.
Yes.
I'm open to whatever.
Thank you. Well, as, as many people know, I'm privileged to serve as the select board's liaison to the council on aging and have done so for the last six years. And I really want to commend Mandy and the others that participated in the presentation from the different departments because every month we see in the town manager's report, the statistics, the data that Mandy puts together and, and the narrative on participation. But I think tonight, you've, you've been able to put a face on those numbers and I think that's really important for the town. I just want to say, I know we have technical presentations coming up from Terry and, and Jill and, and the architect and the project manager, I believe. This is a, this is something that has been five, the, the proposed senior center is something that has been five years in planning since I've been on the board. And we had a community needs assessment that Mandy referred to, a strategic evaluation that followed that and a space needs assessment. We've had multiple presentations before the select board with ample opportunity of public comment. We had three town meeting sessions on the town, on the senior center proposal. We had three working groups that developed a design and construction plans. And I personally think it's going to be time to call the question, so to speak, at the upcoming town meeting on this, on this issue. And I'm, I intend to, you know, very, very enthusiastically be supportive of going forward with this important project. And I'm very thankful to Mr. Marsh on behalf of the town for donating this very choice piece of property for this. I just want to call to the attention of the public who are listening. They'll hear this in the presentations upcoming. There are two points I want to make. One is that the most recent revision of the, of the financials on it are going to show a reduction in the price and the cost of this project in excess of $500,000, which I think is quite an accomplishment. And also there is, included in the selectments package tonight, and I think Jill is going to touch on it, is a report from the town's finance director on the subject of debt and the debt levels in the town. And I know is a concern of the, the members of the finance committee. And I think Jill lays to rest, or at least lays, any, any really serious concerns about debt and shows that the borrowing that would be necessary for this project will certainly keep us well within the, the town's financial policies relating to debt. And I would also mention that we continue to have a AAA bond rating by, by our bond rating, by, by our rating company, service, Standard and Poor's. And that shows that they're certainly satisfied with where we are on debt. So I really just wanted to get those points across from my perspective as we proceed with the rest of the evening. But thank you very much, Mandy. I really appreciate what you put forward tonight and, and all, and the work of all your staff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dean. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mandy. That was excellent. And to echo what Dean said, you put a face to the problem and you, and, and you also showed, in, in my opinion, that, you know, there's a, there's a great need out there for the seniors. And, and it was like two, three years ago, I sat down with you and, and we talked a little bit about what the, the need is, and it's even greater. I, I have comments I want to, I'd, I'd like to make and I think I'm going to wait to sum up at the end, Madam Chair, and I'd like that opportunity when we're all done, after the presentations are made. But I think the, the, the group and, and it, and I'll admit that I didn't realize how large a group it was that you were, that, that the town has that is reaching out to our, our seniors. And just to make the point, 60-year-olds, 55, 60, 64-year-old needs are not the same as 90-year-old needs. And, and the COA covers all of that. And you've been doing a great job. And I'll just make this one point. We have a functionally inadequate building, period. It can't meet those needs. So thanks, thanks again, Mandy, and well done.
Thank you, Peter. Corey? I mean, Jeff first and then Corey. Sorry, Corey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mandy, thank you so much for a great presentation on the council on aging's programs. And, and you ought to be, you and your team and the extended team in town ought to be certainly congratulated with many thanks on the way you pivoted your programming and your attentions during COVID. You did a phenomenal job. You know, I think you're the face and the heart of the council on aging. I, I am, you know, very excited about this project and bringing it to town meeting. It's been five long years in the making, as Selectman Castro just noted. He and I toured your building, I think, five years ago and decided that it was totally inadequate and it still is inadequate. And you, you now have developed programs that, that will fill a, a, a new building and bring a new building to life. And I think we have, and I won't steal anybody's thunder, but I think we have a, have presentations coming forward that will even excite the town even more because of the cost and the, you know, it's a wonderful location. We have a free site right in the village center. And so I, I'm extremely excited about this and I hope the town gets excited about it as well. You know, we've been through an awful year, a little bit more to go, but boy, we really need to embrace a new, new council on aging in West Chatham in a couple of years and, and celebrate and, and put COVID in our rearview mirror. So I'll have more comments later as well, sharing. Thank you.
Okay, great, Jeff. Thanks. Corey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mandy, thank you very much for that presentation. I know you've kind of been kind of tight-lipped on the review, kind of, you know, let us go through the process and, and, you know, let us do the, the site work and the reviews and, and kind of, you know, let the process play out. But I'm very glad you, you, you giving this information to the public. It's critical for everyone's understanding. And it kind of, you know, lets everyone who does know how important the role of the COA is for this community. So I, I thank you for your time and the team's time and efforts. You know, there's been a many years we've been looking, doing through this process. I think 1610 really has its merits. I'm looking forward to having a formal vote to put this up or down. Hopefully this is affirmative vote because I think it's, I think it is the right site. But with this past year being so different with everything, what elements of a new facility do you think is going to be the most beneficial for the COA and programming moving forward, you know, based on the experience of this past year? It's my, my only question I have for you.
Thanks, Corey. I think Joel will be able to touch on this a little bit more. This is something that we've started talking about. So taking what we already knew we needed in a new facility and applying, you know, COVID lessons learned.
And my stance is that, given, I find it highly unlikely that we're not going to find ourselves in some other either health or emergency situation again in the future. So what we know about a new facility is that there would be the opportunity for adequately spaced rooms that would allow for distancing if we needed to, an adequate ventilation system that would not disperse air, shared air throughout the building, but would allow for air purification in each select room. I mentioned or touched on the idea of technology, the idea that we could run in-person classes at the same time as streaming them live virtually so that we're really, we're truly accessible to every part of the population. I think if we find ourselves in need of running outdoor programming like we are now, something that is a parking lot with safe traffic flow that's purpose-built, would be a huge benefit. And I know that there are things I'm not even thinking of because we're still in the weeds. We're still living this and dealing with this crisis on a daily basis. So I would, I can share all that personal experience and observation. And I know Joel and Rick have a higher level view, and they can also share some of the lessons learned from, you know, our neighbors in the region.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Does any of the remote participants have questions for Mandy related to her programming and her presentation? Okay, I don't see any right now. So, Mandy, I really appreciate the time you took tonight. It was really an informative presentation, as I said before, and eye-opening. I really didn't realize how much the COA touched the community the way you did until this past year and working with everybody on the emergency operations center team and, you know, during the COVID experience. So this has been very enlightening and I appreciate your time tonight. So stick around if you can, and we're gonna move on to the infrastructure side of the COA and the project, the build project now. Thank you, Mandy. All right, so now, let me just get where I am. So now we're gonna have our principal projects and operation administrator Terry Whalen and the team of owners manager Rick Pomeroy and our architect Joel Bargman talk about, give us some updates on the project. And then Joel's gonna give us the financial side of everything, the debt, and then we'll open it back up for questions after we, after the board has their questions. So Terry, welcome.
Well, thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so essentially, that's what's gonna be coming up. So the next presentations or portions, segments of presentations will include, the first portion will come from Joel Bargman, the project architect, where he's going to basically go over, kind of building on what Mandy just presented to, you know, on translating the building needs and much more specificity on elements in the new building design that are, you know, will be particularly relevant in a COVID-19 or subsequent types of events moving forward. So what, you know, just expanding upon what Mandy just asked. So, I'm sorry, a little feedback here. And then Rick Pomeroy is gonna do a, basically a quick recap of the approved concept and then focusing really on the basis of the new revised estimate and then also the proposed project schedule that results from this new due diligence. And then finally, as the chair noted, closing with the town manager providing the information on financing and ability to fit this into the capital planning scheme. So with that, I'm gonna start sharing my screen with Joel and turn over to project architect Joel Bargman.
Welcome, Joel.
Thank you, Terry. It is unfortunate that I have to follow Mandy. That was a great presentation. And I think I can use it in a bunch of other communities as well. It was really enlightening. We've been working with Mandy and Rick and Terry, and we took the comments that the select board gave us at the last presentation for what would you do with the building going forward? And if I take Mandy's presentation, we sort of divided the principles and what the building's providing into five categories. And the first one, it really, she showed all that work that was being done with the staff of five in that final picture. And the first thing that you want to do with a new building is design it for volunteers so that you can increase your services without burdening that staff excessively with the new building. So we need to provide space for volunteers to have a touchdown place, a desk, temporary workstations. We need to provide spaces that they can use, that are easy to learn how to use the equipment and that. So it's really making a friendly environment so you can provide these services that are obviously going to increase due to the experience we've had in the last year. The center, Mandy mentioned lifelong learning and the arts, the intellectual stimulation. The wellness is the third category, the healthy, active living for different age groups. And then I think the sort of, all of us, whether you're a senior or not, have seen the information that comes through health departments and council on agings. That happens all the time, but it's been so much clearer during the COVID how strong the information delivery service is through buildings. And it all can't be electronic. It has to be through the provision of professional offices where temporary folks can come in and have a seminar or a lecture on different aspects of aging or aging in place or taxes and estate planning and really disseminating important information to community residents. And then as an architect, the most difficult one is accommodating what I think Mandy mentioned is one of the most important things for decreasing dementia and Alzheimer's and other depressions is the socialization aspect. How do you create a building that's adaptive to that? Next, Terry? So what I was gonna do is walk through the building that we had sketched out and show how that might either be adapted or how it is adapted to the COVID-19 experience and what we've learned over the last year. The heart of the building is that 2,000-square-foot multipurpose room that's subdivisible and served by the kitchen. This is a conceptual view of that room with the kitchen in the background. And you can see the room's big enough for tables to be adequately spaced out. It's clearly open to the outside, so it has just a tremendous amount of natural ventilation, has doors to the outside that are outside of this picture, but allow for outdoor programming to happen. So we're sort of fortuitous that the heart of the building already had a lot of features that would be necessary for COVID. One thing we don't have is we would bring, we would suggest bringing the health office that was put upstairs in the original design down to the first floor. That we've seen that the dispensing of health services through the town nurse or the health officers that may be using the health office are much more valuable on the ground floor and adjacent to this room. This room would have, I did a quick calculation from Dr. Bob's figures that he provided tonight. If you had 3,000 vaccinations a week, that's approximately 800 per day. And folks are looking at these community rooms in council on agings to be that, one of those sites. You would be bringing 75 people per hour, which is every 15 minutes, we would be bringing 19 people through this room. You can see that room's perfectly capable of administering the weekly shots that you might be envisioning for Chatham in the next weeks. And we've been doing this calculation with different health officers who've been way ahead of the curve on these issues, planning in the last years. Next, Terry? Next slide. Mandy went into great depth about technology. And every room in the building has been looked at, and we've revised the budget for technology to make every room broadcast ready. So whether it's a Zumba class in that room I showed you before or a programming event, you can broadcast live with a very simple technology. It's all wired in and very simple to activate for the guest speaker, whether it be a volunteer that I mentioned or a staff person. In the ceiling, you can see the box. Mandy mentioned each room is completely self-sufficient from a heating, cooling and ventilation perspective. There's no sharing of the indoor air other than through an open door as you go from one room to the other. So we have a very self-sustaining heating, cooling and ventilation environment for the building. Next? The kitchen, I showed us the end of the multipurpose room, and you can see how, this happens to be the Falmouth kitchen that had the unfortunate look of opening the day that we went into quarantine last year. But they, working with their health officer and the town nurse, we had designed a kitchen that could be used by the public and have all the needs that you needed for Department of Health requirements in that kitchen. So it's a space that meets all those requirements, but is a very public room, and it's a room that can be used by your volunteers. If I go to the next slide, it shows how that food gets dispensed into the multipurpose room. And you can see we have a little grab-and-go section that's in an airtight container that's only serviced from the kitchen side and displays food, but is in a very highly protected area. And what we're looking is expanding that containment system as we go forward with some of the kitchens in the post-COVID environment. So this is a little bit of pre and what we might do post. You can also see this, at Falmouth, we have a drop-down airtight shutter. So again, you can completely separate the kitchen from the multipurpose room and have these really self-contained boxes within the center. Next? I'll say this is a lucky break. For different reasons, we have the lobby in this senior center in the back of the building. You enter on the right side of the slide on the left and walk down the hallway. And then the lobby is very much distinct from the entry spot. You can see the lobby is big enough so that we have adequate social distancing at the tables. And that corridor getting to the lobby is wide enough that you can have that three-to-six-foot of social distancing in front of the rooms and getting to the lobby. Why is that an issue? As people come for deliveries or drop-off, there may be a number of different people coming to the center. And having that area of socialization separate from the entry, we realized became a very important issue. And the paradigm of this particular senior center has become very popular in the centers that we're designing today. I'll show how all these features get attributed to your plan in just a minute. One more slide, Terry. The last example Mandy mentioned is the technology of air purification. There's two black boxes on the wall and one black box in the ceiling. These are relatively affordable air purification systems that increase the way we can purify the air within each one of those classrooms while they're being occupied. And this technology can recirculate the room air every half hour. And we do have natural ventilation and we do have fresh air coming in. But on a day like yesterday, when it happened to be quite cold, all of a sudden, you can increase your air changes, your air exchange in each room without necessarily impacting the heating and cooling system. So it gives us that very high level of purification without impacting your operating costs. And it's just an enhancement to that really high-technology HVAC system that we had for the system. Next? So I just walked through. I mentioned the indoor-outdoor relationship. The upper right orange rectangle is your lobby. The black arrow shows the two entries into the building. The lobby has a door and a covered porch. And a real access to outdoor, to the right is the conservation land. So we're fortuitous in the design and its connection to the outdoors. We're also fortuitous in that lobby, while not at the back of the building, is completely separated from the entry. And we could even put French doors at the entry to the lobby to create a very self-contained quarantined space should we want to in the next phase of design. So we think that the lobby arrangement is quite nice and the seating area is good. We would suggest that reception area getting a little bit larger and pulling back a little bit from the corridor space. So we might make that larger, but you can see there's great separation between that reception and the three offices. We're fortuitous to have, again, that self-contained separation of the shine, the director, the other program planners in that administrative space. As you go down into the building, one change we would do is to widen the corridors, much like I showed in that picture with the wide circulation space. So clearly, that corridor would want to get wider. We would like to bring the health and the nurses' office down to the first floor where we have the mechanical space. Because again, that would be right across the hallway from the multipurpose room. And you could store the shots, vaccines, if we ever have a flu clinic or a shingles vaccination or another COVID shot, you could administer them in the multipurpose room. We could have the refrigerators in the wellness room to the right. And I will mention that we are facilitating these rooms with great refrigerators and freezers to accommodate those vaccines moving forward. And again, that multipurpose room has plenty of windows and two doors to the outside to facilitate outdoor programming. Rick will show you the outdoor space. We have an outdoor terrace off of the multipurpose room. On the second floor, if I can go to that slide, Mandy again mentioned outdoor programming. We happen to have a 500-square-foot outdoor deck that was designed to perhaps be future expansion, but is available today for outdoor programming. You can see it's about the size of an indoor program space. So it's really perfectly sized for what Mandy mentioned. The next program down from that outdoor deck on the left is the nurses' office. We suggest bringing that down to the first floor. Originally, it was on the second floor because those spaces were more private. But now we're finding there's a desire to have these a little more accessible. Again, we'd widen the corridors in those program rooms, again, have adequate ample windows to the outdoors for fresh natural ventilation. They have divisible partitions to be enclosed. And even with the divisible partition, each half of that room has its own air conditioning and heating system already into the system, into the design. So I do want to mention that when we did the programming and the cost estimating a year ago, we built into the project budget a 10% design contingency. So a lot of these features can be done with no cost, just moving rooms around. Some of the HVAC, that GUV system that I mentioned, or maybe the wider corridor, is gonna add a little bit of cost to the budget. But I want to mention that we anticipated that there were going to be some changes, and we did program in a 10% design contingency that's over and above the contingency that Rick will discuss as the owner's contingency. Because as we go through the design, there's a lot of things that we don't know yet that we'll know in the future. So I don't want to... So I don't want to alarm folks that the budget isn't going to be there for these changes or improvements that we've mentioned, that the groups worked through in the last two months since the board challenged us with what would you do in the post-COVID environment. So thank you. I'll pass it on to Rick.
Thanks, Joel.
Good evening. Hi, how's everybody?
Good, thanks.
My name is Rick Palmeroy. And I'm acting as the owner's project manager on behalf of the Town of Chatham. And boy, two great presentations. Thank you very much, Mandy and Joel. Really, you know, really, really hit home with these. I really appreciate it. You know, I'm just going to refresh everybody a little bit on the site itself. We immediately are adjacent to the conservation area. On the right-hand side, we have our green areas around the facility that we can create. We have an outdoor porch planned right now and a patio. But it looks like we may be increasing some of those hard surfaces on the outside for more outdoor activity area, and we have the space to do so. As Mandy had mentioned, the drive-through aspects of the parking lot are superb, especially if you're dealing with drive-through meet-and-greets, or dropping off items, or handing off items. We have a two-way lane that goes in from Main Street, but then separates to the right and goes around the green area and the vehicles exit on the other side, as that cursor is showing. It works real slick. And I think that there's really not much more that we can talk about here. I think we've covered all of it in our earlier presentations. But it works well with what Joel has presented and what Mandy has expressed as additional needs. And we're looking forward to seeing this site, which was mentioned earlier, but should be mentioned again, is graciously donated, which goes right to the bottom line of the cost. In other words, you're not paying for a piece of property. These are the two-floor plans that Joel just walked through. And we're looking forward to making those refinements. I think it's a great plan to begin with. And with making some of the, widening the corridors and adjusting some of the services down to the first floor, I think just makes it even better, considering what we know today. So it's really exciting. And we're really looking forward to the opportunity to make these valued improvements to the project. You know, it's a different world right now, and we've learned a lot in the last year. So we look forward to getting the opportunity to make those improvements. Here's a picture, just to remind you of the, sorry, the side of the building as you're entering the property off of Main Street, the two-story areas. And then on the left-hand side is the one-story administration area that has direct viewing to everybody coming to the facility, which is paramount. That's something that Mandy really stressed from the beginning. Next slide, if we could. This is the view from the back. And you have the congregate area, covered porch area. And then you also have the second-floor open porch area. And again, the administration area is to your right, that one-story area where the people are walking along the sidewalk. So it gives Mandy and her staff great opportunities to see exactly what's going on. And it gives the users of the facility a lot of opportunity for outdoor activities and fresh air. I think what is, why I'm here this evening is I always like to talk numbers. And I just wanted to give you a refresh. We had some discussions over the last couple of weeks, and we've given you two columns in this budget. The May 4 budget that was presented in preparation, we're hopefully going to a town meeting last year. And we have refreshed everything with numbers as of this March 2021. And when I say refresh, I want to be clear. We did not reestimate the project. What we did was we took, because we felt very comfortable with the values that were included in the budget. In some areas, materials have gone up. In other areas, labor costs have gone down. And so we feel that, speaking with the estimators, that those components balance out. We took the estimate values that were utilized from last year, when it was estimated in March of 2020. And we asked two separate independent estimators their opinion of construction values today as compared to last year. And if you remember, I've mentioned it a number of times, we're always very conservative when it comes to contingencies and escalation. A lot of times, in most, if not all cases, we're presenting, you know, in some cases, maybe a year before we even go out to bid. So we're always being conservative with our escalation values. So in 2020, we were calculating an estimated value, or escalation value, of $327,000. That was based upon 4% annually to midpoint of construction. When we went back to the, we went back to the original estimator, and their opinion was that the numbers had stayed relatively level from what was estimated last year because of what we've endured from the pandemic. So we reached out to another cost estimator, a firm that I work with regularly, and posed the question with that estimator and gave that firm the estimate that was prepared in 2020. And they felt the same way. They felt that based upon what we know today and the bidding environment, they were both comfortable with carrying a level budget from what was presented last year to this year. Now, when we talked about this in December, we had, we didn't have very much information. There'd been very little bidding that had taken place in 2020. And so when we were running the numbers, we carried a very conservative contingencies, multiplying on top of one another, compounding as they would from year to year. And we also applied escalation to the soft costs, and which you had a number in front of you from in December of last year that was considerably more than what we're talking about today. We had, we have real-time information now. In particular, Joel and I are both involved with the Sandwich Center for Active Living. And we designed that through 2020. We began in the early spring of 2020. We bid it this year. We received our bids at the end of January. And we were just, just under 15% below estimate. The estimates were, the budgets were set pre-COVID. And we really were concerned because we didn't know where we were going to end up because it had been very little bidding activity in the year. So we were extremely excited when we received those numbers. And that's when we really went back and started looking at this project and said, "Look, you know, we were expecting sort of a downfall in the numbers to spike based upon availability of equipment. But in reality, there's been so little work, the contractors are extremely aggressive." And we could see that in the number. The first test we did in Sandwich was, we want to look at the next closest bidders because we want to make sure that we don't have a bad number. We had five bids very close to one another, the five low bidders, which told us where the number, where the number belonged, and it was with that bid. So we went back and took a look at this project and talked to the estimators and said, "Look, you know, we were expecting to see a big spike in numbers based upon the COVID, and the reality has happened. So let's take a look at the Chatham Council on Aging project and look at it seriously." So we did. And what you have in front of us right now, what you have in front of you right now is, what we're recommending is keeping a level cost, hard cost and soft cost across the board from what was estimated last, early 2020. The only thing, me being me, the only thing that I'm recommending is that we add, we have at the bottom of the sheet, you'll see, we were carrying an owner's contingency of 5%. I'm also suggesting that we carry a supplemental 2.5% to bring our number to just under $8,400,000. And I just, I'm recommending that because I want to make sure that we remain conservative. I know that we're going to be making some changes. We may be expanding the footprint a little bit. We do have, as Joel had mentioned, at the sign, an estimating contingency built into the construction numbers. But I think that it would be healthy. My recommendation is to carry supplemental owner's contingency of 2.5%. It doesn't mean we have to spend it. And if you look at Joel's track record or our track record, you'll see that we continually bring projects in under budget and are, the borrowing value that at the completion of the project is less than what the community had approved in the entire, in the original budget. So we're doing that on every single one of our projects. But I want to make sure that we, if we have, we have a blip on the radar screen, we have a safety net for that. Part of this process is we've put together an extremely aggressive schedule. And I'm going to go to that. The turnaround time, we, both Joel and I feel strongly that we need to have this bid in December of next year. So what it means is it's a fast-track, aggressive schedule to get the drawings on the street. It's very doable and I have all the faith in the world. I know the quality of the documents that Joel and his team put out there. And I know the quality of reviews that my team performs on these projects. So we feel very confident that we can turn these drawings around in five months and be on the street bidding it the first part of December. That would put us bidding through the holiday season of 2021 and getting, receiving our bids, you know, mid-January. Now, I don't remember, I don't know if a lot of people remember, but we followed the same approach with the Chatham Fire Station project. And we pushed to bid that so that we had received numbers in early of, I forget what year it was, but in January. That's when, we find contractors extremely aggressive during that period of time. And it just has worked out for us in the past. It worked for us in Chatham for the fire station. It worked for us for Sandwich. And we'd like to, we'd like to accomplish that here. Not only to get that period of time of bidding, but we don't know how long this stagnant period is going to last. And my guess, I solidly know that in 2022, there were going to be a lot of projects hitting the streets and going out to bid. And supply and demand tells us one thing. When there's a lot of projects out there, the numbers go up. So we've had a slow 2020. 2021 is starting to ramp up. To give you an example, I had just, just under $100 million with the projects that were postponed in 2020 that are starting to ramp up now and looking to bid, you know, March, April of 2022. So I think that Joel has a couple of other situations like that, where project towns are starting to ramp up again. If we can get this out there, get on the street at the end of 2021, I know we can provide favorable results for you. So that's pretty much it, I think. Jill, do you want to talk about finances?
Sure, thank you, Rick. So before you, before I get into this, we had the finance director provide a report to the board on the fiscal impact for the FY '22 capital borrowing and debt exclusion articles, including the proposed COA project at 1610 Main Street. And those other two articles that are scheduled for town consideration is the wastewater expansion at $7 million and our stormwater drainage project at $4.5 million. And what you see before you is the, our town debt policy. And the town's financial policies say that the town will keep total debt under 5% of the equalized valuation. It's EQV. And what that is, that's the total fair cash value of all taxable property in the town. And that, as you see, is $7 billion, encroaching on $8 billion. And that's certified every two years by the Commissioner of Revenue. And you see that when we set the tax rate. So this is part of the component. So as you can see, we have, as a 5%, we have $395 million available. We never incurred debt to that amount. For the policies, we have $246 million available. And as you know, we typically do not exceed between $6 and $8 million per year on any debt issuance. And that's for items that are approved at the annual town meeting and at the annual town election. Next slide, Terry. So this is our famous debt projection slide. And what this shows is the impact of debt. Should all of the projects receive approval at the June town meeting? In addition to the three articles proposed, which I just had mentioned, the COA, the wastewater project and stormwater project, the chart also includes some additional debt service of previously approved articles, such as the waterfront infrastructure bond, previous wastewater, and the transfer station improvements. And interest rates for our projection range from 2%, for which the items which we bond in the short term, and 3% for projects not yet approved. And the projected debt peaks, as you see in FY 2031, at $7 million. The amount is $7,777,056, which is likely to change. It's dependent on the timing and the issuance of the debt and the interest rates at that time. And as you know, with debt drop-off, the town looks to issue new debt as old debt expires in order to minimize the impact and keep the debt budget as level as possible. So as noted in the staff report, this is a favorable financing climate for municipalities as 20-year bond issues are receiving net rates between 1.25% and 1.5%. And if the project is approved in June 2021, and due to the proposed schedule, we would borrow upfront and take advantage of the low interest rates. I also want to talk about the estimated debt service for the COA project. I know Terry took down the slide. But it's presented at $8,395,555 at a 3% interest rate, just for modeling for a 20-year term. And that would be $671,644 for the first year of the debt service. And if you're probably wondering how it is going to impact the taxpayers, with that amount at that 3% interest rate, the impact on a single-family home valued at $900,000 would be $70.71 for the first year. And for a home valued at $500,000, it would be $44.90 for the first year. And that's based on the FY '21 valuation and our current tax rate. And as you know, with the annual payments on the debt would decline, as would the impact to the homeowners. And if we actually have an interest rate lower than 3%, say it's 2%, it would equate to a savings of over $1 million over the life of the loan. So that's all the information I have. If you can refer to the finance director's report, there's much more information about what our debt patterns have been. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rick, and thank you, Jill. And thank you, Joel, for the presentations. I'm going to turn it to the board now for some questions. And before we proceed, go ahead, Peter. Please unmute yourself, Peter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to make just a short comment. Please bear with me. I'm going to first congratulate, well, thank you, Joel. Thank you, Rick, and the town manager for that presentation. And thank you for the good package that we had. I would agree, I think, with the architectural changes. And I appreciate the fact that Rick is always pretty conservative on his numbers. And that's very, very important. And I, the number in my head was 8.9 million. You know, and it went to 1-3, and I mean, 8-3. Yet, it's still, at the And it went to 1-3, and I, I mean, 8-3, yet it's still at the same price as last year, which is, you know, commendable. And, and with, with another contingency on top of it, that's fine. Madam Chair, I, I do want to, I have a short synopsis, but I'm going to expand it a little, and please bear with me. I'm going to reinforce, I think, I think it's important because this is not something we just, we just decided to do. So I'm going to go through just, just a couple of points. We have, you know, the, the new COA, and I like the idea of calling it a Center for Senior Active Living or something to that effect, but I think Sandwich had the right idea. And, and delivery of, you know, modern social services, which in reality, this building complements our community center, both in services and benefits to the town. And the word there is complement. And it's time, I believe, and I think many do for the long awaited, and the council on aging has used this word, promise of a 21st century facility to be realized for almost, in good half of the Chatham year-round population. And I guess the question is, if we don't do it now, then when? You know, we are, we're faced with a real necessity, and it's for a well-designed senior center. And we're also looking at the reality of cost growth. Fortunate in a way that the building stayed the same. Go back to 2016 COA needs study, you know, together with any comparisons to COA facilities designed for today's seniors of 60 to 90 years of age, let's use that. It shows that, I'll say it again, the functional inadequacy of our existing outdated building. It will require Band-Aid fixes continually over the years. You know, some structural, importantly, with, we talked about the air filtration enhanced, you know, enhanced air filtration and enhanced cleaning and outdoor facilities. But I pulled some of the, FY '19 town board, excuse me, Jill's monthly reports. And in FY '19, there were 1,400 separate individuals utilizing the resources of the senior center. That's 40, almost 42% of the seniors at the time. And our senior population is growing. And, and as we've seen this year, and with many prior building projects, I always bring up the fire station, and maybe it's unfair, but what did we do? We waited a year to make it smaller and paid $1 million more. That, that to me, it just goes against the grain to me. And it, I know people will complain that it's, it's not penny wise and pound foolish, but to me it is. You know, we have a viable and appropriately sized located facility in West Chatham. And it will benefit its neighborhood and not degrade it. I know we'll have people talk about that, and I'd be happy to discuss it in more detail. You know, we're at a point now where a new COA, I mean, is, is, a, a new COA, a perfect new COA is the enemy of the good. And, and that's Voltaire said that since Castro and everybody else on this board, as you quote, so I figured I'd use one. But I think that's very appropriate. But for now, it is really, the perfect is the enemy of an excellent facility. You know, we could do more resources, get more resources and study, but that won't marginally change or improve the results we're going to have. I mean, we know that. And, and getting to funding, you know, obviously, funding for a new COA, it's not done in a vacuum, and you can see that it hasn't been done in a vacuum. Or simp, or that we're simply funding the growing priorities of the community. I'm going to use the, at least the words by the finance committee, and I, and I like them. I mean, you know, they, it is, it is the aggressive, quote, aggressive assessment management, unquote, of prioritizing Chatham's needs. I'll change that. I think it's the aggressive assessment manager prioritizing Chatham's existing unfulfilled, unfulfilled priorities. For example, senior needs and affordable and attainable housing with a prudent conservation and analysis of future resources, oh, what are we going to have? And a difficult, diverse challenges facing Chatham. And I'll just speak to that quickly. You know, we know the senior needs. We've reviewed extensively the site and location. And we have set, and we have set priorities. So what is the impact you just heard to a single-family homeowner? I'll put it a little differently. Our existing market construction assessments has given us a reasonable-priced facility. Our existing market interest rates are low. They're not going to stay there. They're starting to creep up already. The impact to homes valued, as, as mentioned by Jill, is less than, let's look at it from a monthly pay, $3.75 a month for $500K and $6 a month for $900K. And why is $900K? That's our median home price. We have existing debt reduction, and that helps in enabling prudent financial management and, and to tackle all of the critical prioritizations. Yeah, it's going to cost us a little bit more, but look at what we're getting. The COA, together with the capital that's, we're putting in and proposed budget items, like affordable housing, attainable housing, what we're looking to in the future, address the three formidable challenges to Chatham. It's people, the infrastructure and environment, and our coastal resiliency. And you, we have each three areas that have to be covered. And as debt comes down, we need to look carefully at putting, taking care of those. And to say that we're going to sit and wait till the debt comes down more is just putting off something in the future that's going to cost us more money, and who knows how it will happen. To me, it's, it's a, it's a no-brainer. You have to fund to take care of our people. And, and to put a, put a, put a, put a, put a point on it, we're at a pivotal time and for an opportunity to help and protect our future. That's Cory's word. I like it, Cory. Protect our future. Never mind our past, too. The senior center will address the growing senior needs and their contribution to the vibrant demographics of what Chatham could look like in the future. Seniors aren't invisible. They're a main part of this town, and their needs need to be also taken care of. So thank you, Madam Chair. And as I said, three to four years ago, when I was running for election, I, I made this a priority, and I sure hope we can get it done. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. That was pretty passionate. Anybody else want to speak to, speak, questions or comments? All right, Cory, Jeff, and Jeff. Cory.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be relatively brief. I mean, we've talked about this for quite some time. This is a parcel that I think has true merit. It kind of hit our radar when we were looking at the Middle Road parcel, you know, to some degree. And it's evolved to this era, this time. I've spent some time on the 1610 Working Group, looking at the design with Rick and Joel. I think the group has put a lot of time and input into this, this design. My only, my only question is a mechanical question. So some of these amendments that Joel and Rick have mentioned, you know, which I, which I have no issue with at all, would you be looking for like the board's endorsement to, to move forward with those redesigns now? Or just walk me through the mechanics of that, because I, I think what has been presented makes sense of, you know, relocating some of the offices and widening, widening the hallways and such. I don't have an issue with any of that. But walk me through the mechanics of if we, after this meeting.
Well, the, Joel, I see Joel is, is on as well. He turned off his microphone, so we can talk in tandem on this. But my theory on this would be that we've recognized the areas where, that we can improve. We should, you know, make those changes. We can make those changes very easily after this is ratified and approved to move forward. There's nothing drastic here that has to be done. And I think it would, this, all of this would mega out in the next phase. Right now, we've completed the schematic design phase. We would be going into design development, and that's where you're refining your documents. So I, I see this happening, these changes and improvements happening after the town supports the project.
One, one follow-up question is, the forecast with the cost of construction and, and, you know, the aggressive bidding timetable we're looking at, I, I do think is, is going to be beneficial for us. My, my thoughts, and I guess I'm looking for some confirmation in this, is any extensive delays on this, I think would be met with significant increase in cost of material, at least, as other projects start getting up and going. You know, I think we're seeing the cost of goods raising in the private sector for anyone who do, doing any type of small little porch work or anything else. But when you get into the municipal side, I think as, as things progress a little bit further on, I do think there's going to be increasing in cost of goods that would be impacted if any significant delay were to occur. Would that, would that be correct to think that, that way?
That's what we're, that's, that's what we believe, yes. We're trying to hit the market now or in the next, you know, 11 months or 10 months. Because we feel that eventually it's, we're going to see the increases again. So our goal is to get this out on the street as soon as possible.
I agree. Thank you.
Thanks, Cory. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Shereen, and thank you, Rick and Joel, for a thoughtful presentation, yeah, once again. And, you know, Peter spoke so passionately, and Cory asked so many great questions. I'm going to try to keep my comments brief, but I want to talk about timing a little bit. We, we spent five years discussing this project, and we really have looked at it from every which way, every angle, a couple sites, more, more than one site. We did site review, we did RFPs, we had a piece of land donated to us. And now we're presented with the opportunity of, of your having already done Sandwich and Thelms. So the timing for to gain all your insights from all the good work you've done in two other towns in the Cape is really remarkable, and Chatham is going to be the beneficiary of those insights should we go forward. But I want to talk about timing of the market. As Cory just noted, and as you guys agreed, getting this to market kind of more quickly than not is going to advantage the town and keeping our costs in line with what you projected. And I think, I, I agree. I think, I think you're hitting the labor market in particular at a good time. Materials, maybe not so much, but labor in particular, I think there's pent up demand for these type of projects. But never mind that, we're hitting the, the, the financial markets at the right time with interest rates at all-time lows and likely to continue there, and I knock on wood just a little bit, but likely to continue there for the very near future with the Fed taking such an aggressive stance on keeping rates low. So we're hitting the financial markets at the right time when we go to bond this, this project, if we were to go to bond this project, can we bond it? And I agree with Jill and Alex's assessment or, or recommendation that we bond this quickly and upfront because we would take full advantage of those low rates, you know, on the, you know, as, as fast as we possibly could, hoping that they haven't risen or will rise over time, I would think. So now is the time to strike to the financial markets, although certainly we can't do that until after town meeting. So there are so many, so many positives that are screaming at me, a, as a member of the select board, to, to go forward with this project. Again, we have studied this ad nauseam. Great program, great programming needs a great facility. And we heard tonight, with the wonderful programming that, that Mandy has out there, and her team is out there, and this town is out there, deserves a great facility. This is just going to be a stupendous asset for the town, anchoring, helping to anchor West Chatham as a village center. So I, I said I was excited before. I'm even more excited after seeing your presentation. You're adding, you've added even more value this evening. Never mind the fact that we saved you a few bucks and, you know, you cut that contingency, Rick, even though you're still a little conservative there, but you cut it nicely, so I appreciate that. So good, good job. You, you got a big fan here, and I'm going to be an advocate and a proponent for this project as much as I possibly can. I thank you very much. Thank you. Wonderful project. Gorgeous.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments from the board before I take it out to the public? Okay. All right. Any comments from the remote participants? Please raise your hand. If you want to speak by phone, would you please call out your name now? Hey, I'm not hearing anybody at this time, but I do see some hands raised. We see Barbara Segal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go right ahead.
First of all, I have two comments. The COA Board met yesterday. I'm chair of the COA Board, Council on Aging Board, and we voted unanimously to reconfirm our decision to support building our new senior center at 1610 Main Street. So I wanted that on the record.
Thank you.
I also want to comment on Alex's report, financial report. And as, as Jill just stated, if a house is valued at $900,000, the added tax rate, the first tax, the first year, not tax rate, is $70.71. I went a little further. That's 19 cents a day, 19 cents a day. And at the end of the 20 years, it's 14 cents a day. I can certainly think that we can afford to pay 19 cents a day to house this new center. And the first year of debt service, as stated in Alex's report, is $671,644. It's not the full amount the first year. So I so fully, and I certainly hope that the people in Chatham, when they come to town meeting, will pass this and, and we will have a new center we deserve. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Barbara. Our next speaker is Carol DeChristopher. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you, Carol DeChristopher, and I too am on the Council on Aging Board. In the spirit of timing is everything, since the onset of the COVID virus, two of the privately owned facilities that serve the exercise needs of Chatham seniors have been permanently closed. They are the Chatham Health Club and the Pool at Broadreach. Chatham obviously needs a public venue to serve the physical health needs of a growing senior population. So I, I think that that is yet another reason why we need to move on this sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Are there any other remote participants who would like to speak at this time? Mr. Myers? George Myers?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to say I was very impressed with all the presentations, especially by Mandy, Joel, and Rick. Thank you all for your hard work. If a new senior center is ever going to be built in Chatham, it is time to build it at the only location that is available now, and that is at 1610 Main Street. As Cory, Jeff, and Rick said, if there are any significant delays, construction costs will escalate. And with the potential for inflation becoming greater by the day, those costs, as well as interest rates, will increase. Chatham simply cannot afford to dally. Neither Chatham Elementary School nor Stepping Stones Road is a viable option at the present time and are not likely to be available for several years, if at all. I agree with Selectman Castro and Dykens. The need, feasibility, and location have been studied over and over and over again, actually for more than a decade. For the sake of our seniors, it's time to come together and at long last put shovels in the ground at 1610 Main Street. Thank you.
Shereen, you're muted.
Shereen, you're muted.
Any other, thank you, George. Any other commenters, questions?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, it's Rick Levitt.
Yes, Rick, and Herb. Rick Levitt first, then Herb. Go ahead, Rick.
Well, thank you very much, and I want to echo what has been said by just about everyone here. This has been an outstanding presentation, very informative to the public. We can move confidently ahead now with plans to invest in a modern senior center in West Chatham. Seniors deserve their own facility designed to meet their needs. Taking some or all of Chatham's elementary school for noneducational purposes is short-sighted. It is detrimental to the pressing need of keeping and attracting more young working families to Chatham. A major public building in West Chatham will spur needed revitalization of the village center. The West, as, as has been talked about, the annual cost to the average taxpayer is minimal. The monthly cost, the weekly cost, and the daily cost is insignificant, as was pointed out just a moment ago by Barbara Segal. out just a moment ago by Barbara Siegel. I urge you to place a modern senior center on June's town meeting warrant, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Herb Bassett, hi, Herb.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
I can, go right ahead.
Just off the top of my head, some of the pieces of property we've looked at for a COA include the current location, Middle Road, two different spots on Marconi property, Old Harbor Road, the elementary school, Stepping Stones, and finally 1610. That's eight pieces of property that we have looked at for a possible site for a new senior center. And out of all of those, 1610 is the clear winner. You've all heard the number of reasons why, and I've said them all, but this really is the best piece of property we have. And there are other things I'll be saying about at town meeting, and I don't like repeating myself, but you'll hear more from me about it in the future, but I really think we need to understand, eight pieces of property we've looked at, let's just move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Thank you very much. Any other speakers before we move it back to the board? Okay, I'm not seeing or hearing any. All right, so we have a couple of things we need to do moving forward. We have recommendations on a couple of actions. We need to approve placing a debt exclusion article on the warrant for the 2020 town meeting to fund the facility, to vote to support the funding. We're place a ballot question on the warrant, approve placing a zoning article on the warrant. We need to change the R22M to accommodate the municipal use of the lot at 1610. Does that include 02? I'm just asking. And refer the proposed zoning. And also vote on the COA. So Dean, I'm going to count on you to walk us through this. Go ahead, Dean. You're muted, Dean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If it pleases the rest of the board, I'm happy to do that. The first item would be the article for a new Council on Aging facility design and construction, which is in the packet. There is a motion, I wanted to call to Sean's and Jill's attention, I think there is an edit that needs to be made on the motion itself. Seven lines up from the bottom, where it says, "hand may be levied." I think it should read, "that may be levied," but you can, you can deal with that offline. So I want to move that the Board of Selectmen place this article for facility design and construction on the warrant for the annual town meeting 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion from the board? All right, let's take a vote. Selectmen, Select Board Member Kokolas.
Aye.
Board Member Metters.
Aye.
Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Board Member Nacastro.
Aye.
Chair says aye, so that is moved 500.
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board recommend approval of this Article II town meeting 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second, Peter.
Okay, let's take a vote. Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that there is in the packet a ballot question for a debt exclusion for the annual town election on the borrowing for this project. So I'm, this would be, this is the annual town election that is currently slated for June 17, 2021.
Right.
I move that we place this ballot question on the ballot for that town election.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay. Moving along.
Madam Chair, there is in the packet an article that calls for a zoning bylaw amendment and a map change for 1610 and 0 Main, the 1610 and 0 Main Street properties, which is the location of this proposed project. And I move that this article be placed on the warrant for the annual town meeting 2021.
Do I have a second? Cory, seconded it, okay. Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Madam Chair, I reckon, I move that the Select Board recommend approval of this article to annual town meeting 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
And Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board refer this proposed zoning change for 1610 and 0 Main Street properties to the municipal basic district, from the R20 basic district to the planning board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great, thanks, Peter. All right, we'll take a vote. Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Any final comments before we move forward? The presentation was really good, helpful. It was about the quality of the COA, as well as the building and what it can offer to support Chatham. So I'm very thankful for all, for Rick and Joel's presentation, for Terry and Mandy's, and the participating staff who had weighed in on the programs, was really helpful. All right, anything further before we go on? Okay, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
All moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, I'm not sure who that was, but we'll let that happen. Peter?
Aye.
And Jeff?
Aye, and thank you, everybody, that was great. Thank you very much. Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Chair says aye. And thank you very, very much. All right, that's it for us tonight, folks. Good night, Chatham.